Good evening, everyone. I'll call the Town of Air Select Board to order for Tuesday, February 20, 2024. This meeting slash hearing of the Air Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and our participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID number 897-9080-0793 or by calling 929-2056099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at ATM@airMA.us or 978-772-8220, 100 prior to the meetings. As I want to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
I don't have any.
I have nothing.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the board approve the agenda as presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair says aye. No announcements for this evening?
Nope.
So we'll move on to public input. If there's anyone here for public input? No? Excellent. All right, so moving on to our agenda, it is the Town Manager Show this evening. We're moving right on to the Town Manager's Report. Robert, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Since the focus of the meeting seems to be mostly action items I have tonight, in terms of the administrative update, as always this time of year, it's basically all things budget and all things town meeting prep, which we'll get right into. So unless there's any questions from the board on any administrative matters since we last met on February 6th, I'll get right into the action items that will, I think, cover most of what I have. The one thing I just want to give a shout out for is Wednesday, March 27th at 6:00 p.m. will be the second Budget Forum. And with that forum, we're going to have something a little different. We're obviously going to present Draft 3 of the budget, but we're going to use that in the context of the ClearGov budget platform that you've probably heard me talk about a lot of since before the pandemic, then the pandemic happened, and it's about ready to go live. This is basically an online interactive budget tool for the public or for anybody, and we're going to sort of do Draft 3 with that platform as an orientation for the public. So it'll be, I think, a useful tool, and I think moving forward with ClearGov, the public will have access to all of the budget information into one place with a lot of different graphical representations and so forth. So I know it's been a long time coming, but we're looking forward to unveiling that on March 27th as part of the forum. So the first item, there is a request for a one-day beer and wine license from St. Mary's Parish for their Irish Corn Beef and Cabbage Dinner on Saturday, March 16th, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. in the parish hall of the St. Mary's Church. Would be respectfully looking for board approval for that one-day beer and wine license.
I have no issues with it.
I have no issues.
I have none.
I'll make a motion that the board approve the liquor license for the parish hall on Saturday, March 16th, for St. Mary's Church for the Corn Beef and Cabbage Dinner.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair says aye. It's approved.
Okay, thank you. The next item is a budget update, and specifically, as we do each time of year here, is sort of a look at what we'll call Draft Number 2, which was sent to the board and to the Finance Committee last Friday and available to the public through the packet and also on the town's budget page. So you have Draft 2, and I want to thank Barbara Tierney for putting that document together and highlighting in yellow with the notes the changes. So where we stand right now on Draft 2, as the board knows, we have both of the regional school assessments. One of the issues of concern to complete the picture, as the board is aware, the FY25 Air Shirley Regional School District number is not the certified number or the final number, and as Dr. Renda indicated on February 6th, they have some work to do, and we believe that that number is going to be going down, but we don't know what that number is yet. So we have been planning Draft 2 on the assumption of what was sent down from the school on February 6th. Draft 2 sits at a $942,000 increase over last year, or about a 5.26% increase. It's come down since Draft 1. If you factor in the school assessments as they stand, the increase is 1.1 million, or about 6.37%, as I put in the memo. Areas that have changed since Draft 1, which I highlighted, at this time, the reserve fund was reduced from 175,000 to 150,000, back to its historic norm, as the board is aware. The reserve fund has stayed at 150,000 and served the town well until the pandemic. We were proactive, fearing for the worst, increased it up to 300, and have been coming back to the historic norm. We believe that the 150,000, the return to that, based on the history, will be sufficient for the reserve fund. The assessing department, there were some adjustments made to the tune of about $15,000. On the council on aging, in meeting with the director, there was a slight reduction, about $3,500. The library, about $5,000, small reduction. The big reduction from Draft 1 to Draft 2 at this time is the group health and life insurance, which is good news. We had budgeted for 15%, which I had said it, the first presentation was the maximum exposure. Through a lot of work from Barbara, Amanda, Carrie, and looking at it, we're comfortable with an 8% increase for health insurance, and this will be the switch to Maya. So that represents a decrease or savings of $151,332. So those are the major sort of adjustments. The budget, Draft 2 doesn't include the COLA recommendation for non-union, which we'll talk about tonight. The police patrol contract first-year costs, it doesn't include that, but the board will be discussing that this evening in executive session. The police dispatcher's contract negotiation is in process and is anticipated to conclude by early March, and I will have an update with the police chief for this board in the beginning of March regarding the status of the regional dispatch agreement with the Town of Shirley. And then there are four non-union personnel service contracts that are in the process of negotiation. So those are sort of the last sort of four major pieces to what would be Draft 2 to Draft 3. We are actively reviewing all budget lines and with departments, looking for other efficiencies. Also, the general insurance lines, some good news on that front. We have 10% placeholders there, and we believe some of those will be able to come down shortly. It's one of the last pieces every year, the general insurance, it's by the beginning of March. So the budget is taking shape. Again, the big piece is the Air Shirley Regional School District Assessment, which, not to oversimplify, but if that would come down at a minimum 300,000 total, as was said on February 6th, that would be helpful. So that's where we are in Draft 2. The Finance Committee is continuing to meet with departments and reviewing everything. And with that, I don't know if there's any questions from the memo or anything on Draft 2 as we're moving towards Draft 3.
I don't have any questions on Draft 2 yet?
Nope.
The next item, as we do every year, Item 4, is just a brief update as the budget process is moving forward. We're now at the point of developing the 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, which remains under development. So I put in the packet a memo as to where things are looking as of February 16th in terms of articles and in terms of topics. As everyone knows, the warrant officially closes on March 29th at noon. That's the deadline for citizens petitions and warrant articles, so things are subject to change. And of course, the Select Board has the final say on April 2nd as far as approving the warrant that will go to town meeting. So in your, as you'll see in the packet as it stands, we're at, as of February 16th, there are about 32 articles. The historic average, I looked for in hotel meetings, between 35 to 37 articles. I'm not going to go through all of the topics because a lot of them are the standard business articles, and I know that in speaking with the moderator and be meeting with him and the town clerk, we'll be looking again to do a consent agenda on some of these business items, which means if there are no questions, of course, if there are questions, they'll be taken from the floor as they should be, but if on some of these there aren't any questions or so forth can be moved by consent, we can focus on more the substantive issues. Just real quick, in addition to the standard articles, there'll be two articles for both of the police contracts, patrol and dispatch. Article 4 will be the omnibus budget, which will be a presentation, and I'm sure a lot of questions and discussion. Article 5 and 6 are each of the school assessments, and based on previous years, this year, both Dr. Renda and Dr. Pigeon will each make a brief presentation on the budget assessments for both of those articles at town meeting. Then you have the enterprise articles, as we do every year. Article 11 and 12 are the two capital articles, and I just want to point out that, as the Chair and everyone knows, all of the capital information is on the capital planning webpage and the budget webpage, so it has all of the presentations there. Then we are going to, the revolving fund article will be back because some of the spending limits are going to change for town meeting. Article 16, and these numbers may change, but there'll be an article to establish the opioid settlement revenue fund. So we've talked about the opioid funds. We've been advised as a best practice from the Department of Revenue, per town meeting, to create a fund for those monies, so that will be there. Just going down quickly, again, the stabilization fund. The authorization for the town's acquisition by purchase of 71 Sandy Pond Road, we talked about that a lot at the last Select Board meeting, but again, that requires authorization from town meeting. Community preservation is looking, that it's going to have a few articles, their standard business article, their transfer of funds article, also an article to transfer the funds, there were previously $190,000 authorized for the old central fire station project, which is unfortunately not going to happen, and those funds, because town meeting appropriated those CPA funds, they have to be appropriated back to their accounts. Habitat for Humanity has an exciting proposal, and the CPC is having their public hearing on March 6th. There will also be an article for partial funding for 71 Sandy Pond from CPC, which there'll be a public hearing on March 6th. Did go to the CPC last week, and they did authorize the pre-application and to go to public hearings, so that'd be for 350,000 of the 700,000. Then there are going to be four, I think the board briefly heard recently from Janet Provodakis from their working group. There's going to be four zoning bylaw amendments that are, we believe that are minor but important corrections. One is to update the town's zoning map to correct that issue over on Harvard Road with maxent property. There is one about, we found out through working with town council, another article that has to do with the size of the zoning board of appeals in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 40a, Section 12. We all know that the ZBA is a five-member appointed board with two alternates. We've been advised by town council, for whatever reason, and I know the town planners here, if I get this wrong, we need to, town meeting should adopt the statute, so to be consistent, so it's sort of a housekeeping issue.
So we need to, town meeting needs to adopt the statute to allow the ZBA to be five members with two alternates, and that's why we've been doing things for over a decade, two decades, three decades. I stop me if I've finally gotten there?
No, so that's correct, and the reason that is is because in this Mass. General State Law, it states that the ZBA can be either a three or a five-member board.
Correct.
So we just need to specify which one we are, and within our bylaw, we just implement the ad of language that we're five-member board with two associates or alternate.
So it's more of like a housekeeping?
It's just a housekeeping, yeah. Town council, I find that we should have that in our bylaw.
Where was town council when they looked at this? Seriously, question. We updated the zoning bylaws.
Yep.
Not long ago, and that was a big fuss, even getting that to town meeting to be approved. And if you look at it, it says in accordance with Mass. General Law, that says three or five. So where was town council years ago not looking at that and saying, hey, we should do this?
I can't speak on that as I wasn't here in that time, so I don't know.
Well, I mean, it's a valid question.
It is. It is a valid question.
Because, I mean, why are we having to do cleanup on something that, you know, town council said was fine?
Yeah.
And the zoning bylaws were approved by town meeting, and that particular bylaw, our town bylaw says, look at Mass. General Law, and nobody has ever...
Yeah, I mean, this is a common occurrence, you know, where town bylaws do need to be updated, house cleaning, you know, house cleaning for it.
Oh, yeah, we've been doing it. Yeah, yeah.
It happens all the time. Sometimes it's just an oversight with, because in 2018, I believe you guys did the whole bylaw.
We did all the bylaws, but before that, the zoning bylaws.
Yeah, so...
Two, so...
Yeah, exactly. So it's possible that it was just something that was missed.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just want to interject, it's not an answer, it's not the correct answer, but it's going to be a constant living document, general bylaws and zoning bylaws.
Well, yes, and it should be. It should be. I'm just, you know, it's just kind of an interesting, you know, this question coming up, and then, you know, all of a sudden, very tell, town council says we should do this, and it's like, well, where were you?
Yeah, I'm sure this is not going to be the last time either.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't change the past, so, yeah.
No, I understand that, but it's still a valid question.
It's a valid question, because, yeah.
I'm not allowed to ask a question?
No, I never said that.
Okay.
I'd like to move on with the meeting, if that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't take any time. Okay.
And I should point out on all four of these, as the board is aware, so procedurally, Danny will be back on March 6th for the board with a very brief presentation on all four that's required. And then I just put in the notes, then the planning board is going to have a public hearing on all four at their meeting on March 12th, which is also required. And then, as the board is aware, at town meeting, the planning board needs to report out to the body at town meeting on all four of them. So in addition to the zoning map, the size of the, what we'll call the size of the ZBA, there is another article that looks to amend Section 5.2, the Table of Use Regulations of the Zoning Districts. And again, Mr. Chair, in the interest of time, I know Danny will be back on the 6th to do a formal presentation. And then the last zoning bylaw amendment is to amend Section 10.3.3 for inclusionary housing, and if the board will recall recently, when there was a proposed development on West Main Street, it raised this issue of the minimum size of a dwelling unit to be 750 square feet. Keep looking to him, he'll keep me honest. And this looks to correct that. When I, is correct the right word, or through you, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please.
So we ran into that issue on the 750. They wanted to make studios under 750 square feet, and based on how our bylaw is stated now, there's a requirement of 750 square feet for any dwelling. And so what we've proposed here is to allow within the inclusionary housing, so if you trigger the inclusionary housing, which is any multifamily, five units or more, then it would add a section within it that says it references the DHCD guidelines, which is now EOHCL. And they, within the guidelines of new construction, they have target unit sizes for studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom to make sure that it's affordable. And so we just reference the actual guideline within the bylaw, which gives the planning board the authority to allow for that.
Okay.
And again, there will be a presentation on this, not only on March 6th, but March 12th and at town meeting as well. And the four of these sort of came, the genesis of the four of them came from when Janet was before the board previously, this working group that consisted of the town planner, the building commissioner, members of the planning board, and other individuals as well. So those are, that puts us at sort of the 32 articles. I know I went over a lot of the standard business ones that we see every year. Thank you, Danny.
Thanks, Danny.
As of today, the town clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, but there were no citizens petitions as of today, and there still may be additional warrant articles up to the deadline, but we will keep the board updated if that's the case. So things are shaping together.
All right. Excellent, thank you. Any questions on the warrant articles?
I don't have any.
Okay.
The next item, Item 5, is the FY25...
Hold on, we have a question on Dennis.
I have his hand up. I have a couple of questions. On the article, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. So on the Article 5 and 6, the school assessment, Robert mentioned that Dr. Renda will be or is planning on giving a presentation at town meeting regarding the school assessment.
Correct.
Is he going to, or will he initiate that, or must it be requested from the floor by a member of town meeting? I was waiting last year for the school presentation, which I had understood wouldn't forthcoming, only to let it pass, and then the moderator did not allow my question regarding the assessment. So my question is, will Dr. Renda initiate coming to the floor and providing a discussion of the school budget, or must that be requested from the floor?
So through the Chair to Mr. Curran's question, based on, at the conclusion of last town meeting, the town moderator has asked, and of course, the town moderator is the authority at the town meeting, but the plan is, Dennis, is that there will be a presentation on the FY25 ASRSD School Budget Assessment, Article 5, and then Article 6, Dr. Pigeon will get up for the Neshova Valley Technical High School. So the plan is that both superintendents will make a presentation on both of their respective budgets. That will happen.
Okay. Great, thanks. Thanks for that. And the other thing...
Dennis, one second, please. Ms. Copeland, you had your hand up.
So I would like to request a member of the board to say that they will specifically ask for this from, because the public, there is a misunderstanding of when we're asking for that presentation or the moderator, and I just would like to ask that someone very specifically take that and say that.
So someone from the Select Board should ask for the presentation?
He wants a very clear answer, is what Mr. Curran's asking. So I would just ask that someone take the lead on that for both of those articles, to say when it's motion and it's seconded from the floor, and then someone just please say, and now a presentation from the respective leader.
Okay.
And I think that will help a lot of members on the town meeting floor to get their presentation at town meeting, because I think that's what he wanted, was a specific yes. I'm going to make sure that happens.
Okay.
And the question isn't being answered or asked clearly, but I'm getting asked it all the time.
So in all these previous meetings, town meetings, hasn't the moderator said, it's my understanding that there's a presentation?
Generally, that's been what's happened, so...
So, but misunderstanding is, is when we call it, you second, and then you say, is there any discussion? At that point is when it should be done. And for whatever reason, in the past, Air Shirley is getting glanced over, so if someone says, is there any discussion, and no one stands up, no one says, we have a presentation, no one says, where is the presentation? That's not specifically happening. Air Shirley is getting passed over, Neshova Tech may have already made an arrangement, or the moderator is ready for that, and then it happens. So it's happened the past two, if not three, town meetings, and it needs to be corrected, that someone has to specifically say, because Air Shirley is ready, and then Neshova Tech does it as well, but we just have to do it. We can't, it keeps getting glanced over, I see it on the stage year after year, so I'm just asking somebody to just please make sure that it happens. Don't let it go quietly, because for whatever reason, there's a disconnect.
Okay. Can we add that to the warrant articles, like the ones that the board gets, or like who's doing the motions, that you have to note underneath if there's a presentation, and we can add that to the discussion?
Yeah, specifically for those two articles, I hope that will help, just for those two.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So the person will do the motion, it'll get seconded, and that person will then say, again, Mr. Moderator?
I think that's easiest.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, sorry, Dennis, your next question, please.
No, I was just going to respond to Pauline, but that's okay. I will, the second one was about the opioid settlement. I know that several months back, we had discussed, or I had raised the question of how Ayers' funds for, through the opioid settlement were so much less than some of our surrounding towns, and had asked how the formula had been calculated, or whether our elected representatives understood that it would appear in a rational world that Ayers' , you know, funds from that settlement should have been greater than some of our surrounding towns. So did we ever get an answer about why it is, or was that number raised?
Mr. Chair, it was, to Mr. Curran's point. The answer, I don't think people are going to necessarily like. What I think would be best is, I think, two things, is, could give an update on that at the next Select Board's meeting to go through. We did have a lot of back and forth with the state and the court settlement on that, and give an update to the board on that, and be prepared to integrate that in the update, you know, for the town meeting. So the article will be for the settlement amount, but yeah, Dennis, there were some very specific reasons we were given. Now, whether you agree with those or not is another, because I don't necessarily with all of them either as to how they came up with this, but if it's okay with the board, we could give an update, and Dennis, I know I owe you a time to meet on some other topics I could discuss with you as well, because it's not a, it's not a simple five-minute answer, but we do, we did follow. Yeah.
Yeah, sure, no, I understand, and, you know, okay, no, that's fine, all right.
And just, and lastly, I anticipate this question, Dennis, for this article at town meeting, so I can assure you, we will be prepared to answer that, but I will connect with you offline, if that's good, and then for the board, maybe under my report for the sixth, I can give the snapshot and a memo.
Okay, excellent.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else, Dennis?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you.
Okay. The next item, Mr. Chair, Item Number 5, and I'd ask Amanda Lewis, the Benefits and Payroll Manager, just join me at the table, is the FY25 Non-Union Personnel Cost of Living Adjustment. So as the board is aware, per the financial policies... So as the board is aware, per the financial policies, which were just updated, but there was no change to this a few years back, the town codified the process for the non-union cost of living adjustment recommendation. And in the financial policies, it says that each year, and it's generally around this time, that the town manager will come to the board to make a recommendation on the cost of living adjustment for non-union employees. That also includes the call firefighters and any elected officials that receive an elected stipend. So that's the three select board members, the three board of assessors, the moderator. And I think, we used to count the tree warden, I don't know if that's changed.
Tree warden, veterans agent.
Yeah, in that. So also to standardize it, the benefits and payroll manager each year looks at a series of indexes to base that analysis on the recommendation. So the recommendation, as the board knows, it looks at various factors, the Consumer Price Index, the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, the Federal Reserve Banks information. And then Amanda, on behalf of the town, participates in a COLA survey of communities through the Massachusetts Municipal Human Resource Association. We also look at all of the town's collective bargaining agreements for parity. And then we come before you to make a recommendation. If the board approves the recommendation, that recommendation is integrated into the FY25 budget. As the board knows, this is just more for the public or new folks that are watching, the budget article, the omnibus article, and the explanatory note will clearly say what the cost of living recommendation adopted by the board was, the cost impacted, and that's in the budget. So Amanda did all of the analysis a couple of times at my request, which I appreciate. And as you can see from the metrics, and some of this, Mr. Chair, I think some of it is obviously driven by inflationary costs, which are affecting everybody. But as you can see from the metrics, the days of, at least the last couple cycles, the days of the 2% COLA, if you go by the metrics, it seems to be drifting away from that. However, we also have to factor in affordability, sustainability, and parity, you know, with the union contracts and so forth. So in, you know, talking with Amanda and based on her analysis and in my memo, we're recommending that the board consider for FY25, a 2% COLA adjustment. The impact to the budget for all of those positions is calculated, is estimated $63,987. So we're recommending that this year, looking at, you know, equity and parity with the union contracts, the non-union folks. Also the issues of affordability and sustainability in light of what we're seeing, increased budgets, increased budgets from the school and so forth. But as you can see with the metrics, you, the 3%, we seem to be more in that universe the last couple cycles. But we believe that the 2% for FY25 is in the, in the best interests of the town overall. And through you, I don't know, Amanda, if you wanted to add anything?
Nope. Everything you said is spot on. It seems over the past couple of years, for the non-union folk with inflation, it would have warranted a higher COLA percentage, but, you know, that just wasn't in the cards with the town funding and whatnot. And even this year, but just for the sustainability for the town and the budget, you know, the 2% is a modest suggestion.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'm in agreement with this.
I have no questions. Janice?
Thank you. So you need a motion, right? I'll make a motion that the board approve the 2% COLA adjustment for fiscal year 25 non-union personnel as recommended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you. Item six, as discussed at the February 6th meeting, the town has put forth an application to the Community Preservation Committee for the acquisition of 71 Sandy Pond Road by purchase. As discussed, the cost is $700,000. The plan is for $350,000 to come from the open space and recreation categories. As I already mentioned, I went to the CPC last week with which is, with what is called a pre-application for eligibility, submitted that to the committee. The committee voted unanimously to move it forward to the public hearing, which is going to be on March 6th at 7:00 PM, which is the final step. After the public hearing, they will vote, and then it will go before town meeting. So as part of that, I'm respectfully, in the past, when we've had a town CPC project, as many of you are familiar, have asked for a letter of support from the select board for this project. And I put together a draft, and it's just a draft, if members want to change or add to it, a letter of support for the application. I met with the Parks Commission last week at their meeting. It was received very favorably. They were excited about the possibilities that could be there. They did vote unanimously to issue a letter of support from the Parks Commission for the application. So the application will go to the CPC on March 1st, and it'll be public record at that time. I think the final piece that the board needs to, and we don't have to discuss it tonight, just the last piece, is the exact funding plan for the balance of the $350,000. It's been discussed conceptually, you know, whether it comes from the UDAG, from ARPA, from a combination of the two. And we're just waiting for town council's opinion on that as well.
Janice, and then Dennis.
Quick question. What's our ARPA balance?
The ARPA balance is, I think, four-
Unallocated 423.
423,000. And the UDAG is-
I think we're up to date with all our reimbursements for UDAG.
I believe so.
Yeah. So just quick, my only concern about the ARPA is that we've still got a bridge that's got to be repaired. And I'm extremely concerned about, you know, since it's been a year, since we last talked about it, about not having ARPA funds. So I would just like that to be considered maybe, maybe a hybrid or just, keep that in mind.
I'm kind of on the same thought you have with ARPA, leaving that for emergencies only. I think this is a planned purchase, you know, leaning towards UDAG.
Yeah.
I agree.
Or, I mean, a hybrid.
Or a hybrid.
You know, and we could, you know, could look at that, so depending on the impact. So, but anyways.
All right. Thank you. Dennis?
Yeah, thanks. So on the 71 Sandy Pond, is that, that is, this is the community preservation folks are initiating the desire to acquire that property and are willing to allocate 350,000, 400, $350,000 for that purpose. So is this considered a CPC project that the Recreation Commission supports? Or is this a Recreation Commission project that the CPC is willing to kick in some funds for?
I'll, so Dennis, to answer your question, it's actually, we're going to call it a town project that was actually initiated by the select board. The opportunity to acquire this, potentially acquire this property was presented just before the holidays. The three-acre site is scheduled to be developed for residential purposes. The town was approached by the owner and said, would your town be interested in purchasing this? The select board went through a series of negotiations and so forth. And at the end, the, what has come of it is a purchase and sales agreement for $700,000 for the three acres that includes the total demolition of the house, all structures, everything removed, and the property leveled to grade, as they say, to the, to the street level. The feeling from the board and the town is that this property would be used for open space, recreation, or park purposes. There's no definitive plan except in those categories. And if the town meeting approves it, then we would move to the next stage, which would be the, the development of the future plan, which would be a public process. But it would have to be for parks, open space, or recreation purposes. The CPC was willing to hear the application and has offered to fund half of it at $350,000, coming specifically from the open space or recreation categories. If you recall, there's four categories of funding under the CPC. The balance, which we were just talking about with the board, the other $350,000 would have to come from town funds, which the two areas and the board will further refine, the two potential areas is the Urban Development Action Grant, or ARPA funds, or a combination. I don't believe the intent is obviously to borrow for this money. The intent is not to use any free cash for this land. So that's sort of the funding proposal. That would ultimately be subject to town meeting approval. And there'd have to be two articles. One article that would authorize the acquisition, and another article that would authorize the CPC portion of the funding. And we're just waiting for town council's opinion if the board, because the board can authorize UDAG and ARPA funds, the purview of the board, is that sufficient going into town meeting? Or would there be an additional article needed? And we'll have that answer before March 6th.
Okay. So, but as of now, the Parks Commission, you know, I know it's right across the street from Sandy Pond. The Parks Commission has not suggested they would like to acquire that property for a particular purpose, or they have a vision of what they would like to see that property used for, or anything like that. This, that is, I think it's going to be important going forward to know, for the people to know, who is taking ownership of the use of that land, which town committee department will be spearheading the desire to put something there, or use it for parking, or whatever the case may be. And, I mean, I'm anxious to hear more, but it seems like potential uses for that property, it's just unclear to me exactly what the Parks Commission would have in mind, or if they don't have anything in mind and will defer to other entities.
Okay. Yeah, I think at this point, because the opportunity has presented itself, the first step is until the town owns it, that's the first step. What we can say is that the board is looking at that narrow, that area of parks, recreation, open space. As you know, and I know, and it was discussed publicly, this is not a viable location. Unfortunately, it's not a viable location for the senior center project. I can say as the town manager, as of right now, if you look at the master plan, the open space plan, and any of the other plans, there is no plan from any municipal department to build a building or structure there. The issue of parking, it's been made clear, it's not just to be a parking lot, but the improvement to some parking is both identified specifically in the master plan and the open space and rec plan as a priority for the town. There would be potentially a parking component. But as the board discussed on February 6th and other meetings, there's other opportunities there, whether playground component, park component, pavilion. I think the DPW director said it best the other night to the Parks Commission, think of it as a blank canvas that we as a town need to come together and decide the future of. So we really want to go into it open-minded, but with some small, you know, parameters, that logically, it would be an open space, parks, and rec opportunity.
Okay. All right. All right. Thanks for that.
Thank you, Dennis.
So there's the letter, there's a draft sample letter from the, for the board. The application is due March 1st. So again, if the board wanted to make any revisions or additions, could do that now or authorize someone to, or if you're fine with the letter.
I'm fine with the letter as is. Sean, Janice?
I'm fine with it as is. Okay. I'll make a motion that the board approve the letter of support for the application for CPA funding for the acquisition by purchase of Sandy, 71 Sandy Pond Road. That's presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair says aye. It's approved. Thank you.
And then the, the last item, number seven, the FY25 capital plan update. So in the packet is the matrix of projects for FY25 that were reviewed and vetted by the capital planning committee through November, December, into January. I want to thank the chair for putting together the matrix, and it was also his idea a few cycles ago. It's been a useful tool. The matrix will show you all of the items and the final votes and amounts recommended by the capital planning committee. I also highlight in the packet, if you go to the capital planning webpage or to the budget webpage, not only can you find this matrix, but you can find on each project all of the presentations and all of the information that was presented. When the board approves the warrant on April 2nd, there will be two articles that cover all of the capital. One is the article that is the borrow authorization. These are the larger items that the town will borrow for. The second article is a transfer article that the town will purchase smaller capital items outright, usually anything below $40,000. We try to purchase from capital stabilization. Departments will be prepared at town meeting to make brief presentations, also to answer any questions, especially on some of the larger items. For example, there's an ambulance replacement is one of the larger ones. There's some DPW. There are no capital exclusion or debt exclusion projects this year that require town meeting approval and a vote. So everything is below those thresholds. I put this in here more so when we do the third budget presentation, the second budget presentation for draft three, we usually do a snapshot on capital. But I just wanted to get this on the radar screen. I don't know if the board has any questions, but also the public that is interested, and we have had members attend capital planning committee meetings, which is great, to check it out on the website. I mean, the information in detail. So I don't know if there's anything from the board on that.
No. I don't have any questions. Here's a nice matrix.
It is a nice matrix.
Yeah. And the capital planning committee, we believe that all of the FY25 items in the capital plan are within, obviously, they have to be within policy and affordability and sustainability. So I think it is a good capital plan to continue to move the town forward. Unless there's any other question, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
I don't have any other questions. Sean, Janice, no? Okay. Thank you, Robert. Moving on to new business and select board member questions, nothing on the agenda, but I'll open up any discussion points now. Janice, I do want to apologize before I was a little short with you, and I apologize for that. I should have handled that more professionally. So I'm sorry about that. Moving on to approval of meeting minutes for February 6th, 2024. I didn't have any changes to that?
No change of credits.
Nope. Okay. So nothing?
I'll take a motion to approve, please.
I'll make a motion that the meeting minutes from February 6th, 2024 be approved as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Minutes are approved.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Livingston.
I'd like to make a motion that the select board move into executive session, pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A. Exemption number three, collective bargaining strategy, ratification of patrol contract MOA, and review approval, release of executive session meeting minutes for 71 Sandy Pond Road acquisition, November 7th, 2023, December 5th, 2023, January 16th, 2024, and that the board adjourn from executive session, not return to open.
Second.
All right. Roll call, vote, Ms. Livingston?
Aye.
Mr. Copeland?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. We're in executive session. Thank you very much, everyone.